Let the record show at six o'clock, we call a meeting to order. Sarah, will you give the roll call?
Eddie Gokenhour.
Here.
I'm the barmer.
Present.
Eric Goff.
Here.
Present.
Tim Lewis.
Present.
Daniel Gant.
Here.
Martha Bush.
Present.
Ronald Truitt.
Okay, thank you. We have a new member this evening, Mr. Truitt. Welcome to the Planning Commission. I hope your stay is enjoyable. The first item we have was the approval of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Goff to approve-
Second.
Second by Mr. Gant to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. The second item is our sunshine law, and that is if you wish to speak to this commission this evening regarding something that is not on the agenda for a public hearing, that would be the time for you to speak. If you are here to speak for something that's on the public hearing, that it will be heard at that particular time, whenever the agenda rolls out. Is there anyone who wishes to speak under the sunshine law? Let the record show that there's no one to speak. Approval of the meeting minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gokenhour to approve the meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain due to absence.
Abstain due to absence.
Let the record show there's two abstentions due to absence, Mr. Gant and Mr. Lewis. Mr. Truitt, do you want to abstain from the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Truitt as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I already did that. Okay, the first public hearing is overlook at Riverside Apartments.
The first public hearing tonight is a request for final plat approval. The project is overlook at Riverside Apartments 2, filed 2212-364. The developer is overlook at Riverside Apartments 2, LLC, and the engineers Frederick Cyber and Associates. It's located in the Bolling Waters District, Tax Map 7, Parcel 160.3. The property is located on the east side of Williamsport Pike and south of I-81. This project proposes six apartment buildings and two carriage buildings with a dog park, pickleball courts, pavilion, and playground on 7.2 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plat approval contingent upon receipt of a surety in the amount of $300,000 and $300 even. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Do we have anyone to represent the project overlook at Riverside?
Good evening, Ed Schreiber with Frederick Cyber and Associates.
Thank you. This is a public hearing for overlook at Riverside. If you have questions or comments regarding this project, please come forward, state your name, your address, and any comments you might have regarding this project.
There is no one under the closed public hearing.
Second.
Let the record show that there is no one to speak from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gant to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission, do you have questions of Mr. Schreiber or of the staff?
Seeing none, I'll make the motion. We accept staff recommendation. Final plat meets requirements of subdivision ordinance. Final plat approval contingent upon release of surety in the amount of $300,000 and $300. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Gokenhour to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $300,000 and $300. Plat to be released upon receipt of surety.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Gokenhour to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of $300,000 and $300. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
The next public hearing is Robin Jenkins.
This public hearing is a request for waiver. The project is Robin Jenkins. The file is 2302-051. The developer is Robin Jenkins and the surveyor is the Magno Consulting. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 11, Parcels 2 and 2.3. The site's located on Shiley Road approximately 300 feet west of its intersection with Nathan Bush Lane. The developers proposing the creation of a 0.18 acre residential parcel and a 1.32 acre residue with an existing dwelling. The proposed lot will be served by public water and sewer. The developers requesting a waiver to Section 302.2.1 requiring a family transfer plat to be transferred to an immediate family member. By definition, immediate family members are considered grandparents, parents, spouse, children, grandchildren, and siblings. Robin Jenkins' brother, Jeff Jenkins, passed away before the proposed parcel could be family transferred. Staff has no issue with the proposed parcel being transferred from sister-in-law to brother-in-law and recommends approval of the waiver request.
Do we have anyone to represent the project, Robin Jenkins? Come forward, please.
You can represent yourself, sir.
My brother promised me the land while he was alive. He wanted me to live with him and his wife, and he passed away.
Is there anyone here to speak regarding that project, Robin Jenkins?
If not, I'm in public hearing. It's closed.
Second.
Let the record show that there is no one to speak from the public. I have a motion by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gokenhour to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Jenkins?
Mr. Jenkins, hi. Sorry for your loss. I had a question about who the property will be conveyed to. On the plat, it references Michael Jenkins as a nephew, okay? And will the property be conveyed to both of you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could be a question for staff. Is there any consideration in the family transfer regulations about one lot being conveyed to one family member? No problem?
It doesn't have to be explicitly to one family member, but there wouldn't be another lot that could be conveyed to Mr. Jenkins or his son, since they are both being conveyed a lot. That's pretty much how it would be for the rest of the property. So he wouldn't be able to be conveyed an individual lot off of that residue nor would his son.
Of that lot?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Additional questions?
None. If there are no further questions, I'll make the motion. We accept staff recommendation and approve the request for waiver.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Goff to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant the waiver to Section 502.1. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. The next public hearing is Patrick Jackson.
This public hearing is a request for waiver. The project is Patrick Jackson, filed 2302-053. The developers, D.R. Horton and the engineers, Foxen Associates. It's located in the Apeken District, Tax Map 15, Parcels 45 and 47. The site's located on the south side of Shepherdstown Road, approximately half a mile west from the intersection of Shepherdstown Road and Files Crossroad. This project proposes 837 residential lots and one commercial lot on approximately 312 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The developers requesting a waiver to Section 502.1 of the subdivision ordinance requiring a minimum of two points of access onto a public road or West Virginia Department of Highways right-of-way for any phased or non-phased residential development which generates initially or cumulatively 100 lots or more. The first two submissions of the sketch plan showed points of access at Shepherdstown Road and Files Crossroad via the private right-of-ways owned and maintained by Fieldstone. A portion of the project site was originally incorporated in the 2003 Fieldstone Sketch Plan. Only Fieldstone Sections A and B were final platted, and the developer's rights to the access to their private right-of-ways expired. According to the developer, the Fieldstone HOA denied Patrick Jackson's connection and use to their private right-of-ways. The developer then approached the property owner to the south to find an alternative second connection to Files Crossroad or Golf Course Road. The property owner wanted the developer to construct 4,700 linear feet of roadway which was part of the now expired Weinbrunner Crossing. This option was not pursued due to the costs associated with the construction of said roadway. The developer approached county staff with another proposed access off Shepherdstown Road which would run parallel with the primary access. These entrances would be approximately 450 feet apart, which would not provide efficient ingress or egress. Since then, the developer has proposed a four-lane boulevard entrance in lieu of two separate points of access. The traffic impact study was revised and submitted to DOH for review and comment. The traffic impact study states that at full build-out, a traffic light would be warranted at the Shepherdstown Road and Files Crossroad intersection. It was recommended that a follow-up study be performed at that intersection after the construction of the 200th dwelling unit to determine if signalization is justified. The traffic impact study states that exclusive left-turn lanes would be justified in both directions along Shepherdstown Road with the full development of this property. Additionally, an exclusive right-turn lane would be justified with the full development of the site. At the Shepherdstown Road and site-access intersection, signalization would be justified with the completion of the development. A new signal warrant study is recommended to be performed at the construction of the 300th dwelling. Typically, West Virginia Department of Highways does not require the developer to complete the right-of-way upgrades until the number of dwellings stated in the traffic impact study have been constructed. Planning and engineering staff have major concerns with the health, safety, and welfare of the public given the current conditions of Shepherdstown Road. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the waiver request to Section 502.1 contingent on the following. One, signalization at the intersection of Shepherdstown Road and Files Crossroad. Two, exclusive left-turn lanes on both approaches of Shepherdstown Road at the Shepherdstown Road and Files Crossroad intersection. Three, exclusive eastbound right-turn lane on Shepherdstown Road and Files Crossroad. Four, signalization at the site-access and Shepherdstown Road intersection. Five, a 100-foot-long right-turn lane into the full movement access. Six, a 200-foot-long left-turn lane on Shepherdstown Road with two approach lanes on the site-access. Seven, all off-site traffic upgrades are completed prior to the final plating of the 100th lot. And eight, bonding of all aforementioned onsite, or I'm sorry, off-site traffic upgrades with account.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. Steve Cianovich with Foxon Associates representing the applicant, and I would like to add that the developer is accepting of all the conditions that Laura had read into the record or suggested within her staff report. And lastly, I did bring an exhibit with me that I'd like to bring up and perhaps put in front so all of you can clearly see the surrounding area of the property.
Do you want to show that now?
Yes, thank you. I brought two versions. This is probably the easiest to view, or this is the aerial background coming up to see. This is Route 45, Shepherdstown Road, Files Crossroad, the year of the year. As Laura explained in her staff report, this is the Fieldstone Development, and access was denied by the Fieldstone HOA to get out to Files Crossroad, because I believe that agreement long expired.
You may want to speak into the microphone so you can be heard.
I'll just recap what I said earlier. This exhibit at the top of the sheet shows Shepherdstown Road. Off to the right on the exhibit is Files Crossroads. Immediately to the east of the proposed community, proposed development, is the Fieldstone Development. Years ago, there was an agreement where Fieldstone would be able, you know, we'd be able to access this property shown in white through the Fieldstone Community, but that had a sunset clause on it, and the developer did not exercise that at the time. So that's no longer on the table. As Laura explained within her staff report, there was also some investigations to try to tie to Golf Course Road. That length of road off-site was about 4,700 feet and was cost prohibitive. The development just couldn't absorb that, and the reason that is there's a number of other off-site improvements for utilities, including water and sewer, that are very costly. It's just not like we're connecting two water and sewer facilities that are adjacent to the site, but there's quite a bit of off-site work that needs built to provide public water and public sewer to the property.
Do you want to give us those figures, how far it is to get water and sewer?
I'm afraid I don't have those with me.
Is that it?
I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing for Patrick Jackson. If you have questions or comments, this is your opportunity to make those known. You will have three minutes to speak, and I would ask that you do not repeat the same thing that the person said earlier in the comments, because once they're mentioned, they're recorded, and they're part of the permanent record. So I'll open this up for a public hearing. The first person wants to come forward, state your name, your address, and then begin with your questions.
Evening. My name's Don Neiser. I live at 119 Grenadine Court, Fieldstone Development. Reading through their document, it seems that all these 837 single-family homes will be unwell and septic. Okay, so you're signaling no?
Public water and sewer.
Pardon?
Public water and sewer.
Public water and sewer. Okay, that answers my question, so I'm done.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sean Eichenberry. I reside at 131 Bridal Path Drive in Martinsburg. My wife and I own the property that's adjacent to the boulevard on the west side, half-mile advantage on that. So my comments are regarding the actual request for waiver justification document submitted by Foxon Associates, the project engineer. So the subject document was produced by them, and asserts some measures attempted by the developer to obtain alternate connections to public roadways for this project. And that the limitation of only one entrance was not the fault of the developer, I disagree. I believe the blame totally lies with project stakeholders, including the property owner as well as the current and past developers. This project site has a history. There have been past attempts to develop Apeken Map 15, Parcel 45 and 47. While the developer may be new, the property owner, Patrick Jackson Corporation, they've been there all along, has made other attempts to get permitting necessary to develop there. So his first assertion from Fox, developer tried to extend the existing Fieldstone street network to serve his community, however, you know, that expired. I believe when the Fieldstone subdivision was developed, there were plans for more phases added, as there were two dead-end streets in that development that butt up against our adjacent Parcel 47. So this is a missed opportunity. They did let it go too far too long, so now they can't use that. So, you know, that's not our fault, that's theirs. And then the second assertion, the developer then reached out the property owner to the south to find an alternate connection to Golf Course Road or Files Crossroad. That property owner wanted our client to construct 4,700 linear feet of roadway following the path of the proposed roadways on his expired plans. You guys could probably fix expired plans, I don't know about that. I mean, it's the cost, you know, tough luck. I mean, things cost money, and it costs more now. The amount of road, 4,700 linear feet, it's about at least a half a mile, I think, for this length of this boulevard, you know, that's a drop in the bucket for all that pavement that they're going to use up. 4,700 feet's nothing. So that's probably enough to pave like a single lane of the proposed four-lane roadway. They like a bargain. They're developing on this land because the cost of the land is cheaper than if they bought land to the east that's $20,000 an acre. I don't know how much they're paying for this. I don't know. Land really goes for $20,000 an acre if that's just what they put on redfin or whatever to, as a starting point. I don't know. I note that this properties have access to multiple public roads that are not West Virginia 45, and that the land is also closer to where future homeowners will be making their payments to the suburbs. So I think if this project is developed, I believe a great many of the working residents will be turning right on West Virginia 25 in the morning, and then right on Files Crossroad, and then right down past the entrance that could have occurred, which was missing opportunity number two. There are other misses, but my time is limited, so I'll go on to their assertion. Number three, the developer then tried a parallel access through Walker Property, a right-in, right-out access only. The county did not like that, and good for the county. Foxon Associates continued on to address requirements to the grant, ran a waiver by offering the following. The conditions of this waiver are not the result of any action taken by the developer in the con-
Sir, your time is up.
Can I read one more?
You can submit that. We'll take it in writing.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Hicks. I live at 33 Shipper Court. It's the 89 House immediately east of the proposed new entrance. Just for the record, I want to vehemently oppose to the whole project, but I believe if I am correct, this is just addressing the waiver. So should I table else topics other than the waiver? Is that true? Okay, that said, the gentleman probably addressed the biggest concern I never saw. I pulled everything off I could off the county website about the light at the new proposed entrance. Living on Shipper Court, sometimes it takes five to 15 minutes just to get on 45 without the light, let alone the light at Files Crossroad, which I didn't understand because that already got killed, the entrance through Fieldstone. Why would we put, although we need a light at Files Crossroad, not for this topic here. If you put a light at the new entrance, that still would put 1,775, by our own numbers, two cars per Berkeley County household, 1,700 cars at that light at all times of the day. Don't even add the 16-year-old drivers. So the waiver for a single point of access, to me, is totally ridiculous in the sense of providing one access to this many number of houses. The second thing I would like to, oh, shoot, it's not addressed in this waiver. There's other concerns. How would I submit those? They're talking about raw sewage remediation that's not addressed, the school impact that's not addressed. Where would be the vehicle for all of us to address that?
We will have a public hearing on the project itself.
At a later date.
Yeah.
This, again, is just for the waiver. So I would ask the county to strongly consider the impact. My daughter got rear-ended just coming on to Shipper Court. Let's add 1,700 cars and see where we go with that. It's just not safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You can submit those to the staff if you'd like, your comment.
Good evening. My name is John Hareem. I've resided at 52 Goshen Lane in Martinsburg, 25404, for approximately the last 35 years in the community of Meadow Spring Farm. I'm a retired BA employee and a longtime small business owner. I'm married with three adult children. I'm here to oppose the granting of a single waiver for ingress and egress off of Route 45, also known as Shepherdstown Road, which will lead to the development of a high-density community of 830 homes as well as unknown commercial businesses. This waiver proposes this double-lane boulevard, single-site entrance to development to be known as Patrick Jackson Estates. The waiver request attempts to circumvent a Berkeley County regulation adopted in 2007 that requires two separate entrances for all developments that access a 99 lots, and that's somewhat redundant. The body of the waiver gives no justification other than waivers have been granted in the past. The proposal does not name the sites of other waivers, nor does it indicate the impact of such waivers have had on surrounding developments when granted. The waiver further proposes the creation of 100-foot right-hand turn lane into a development, into the development, and a 200-foot left-hand lane turn in the opposite direction into the development. Such proposals will have a significant impact on Shepherdstown Road. It would appear that this request also requires another waiver. This, there's little doubt that this will lead to idling traffic which impacts the air quality and creates noise pollution impacting the surrounding small developments. The proposal further infers the placement of traffic lights at the entrance of the development and also on Files Crossroads. Predictably, the placement of such traffic lights so close together will create bottlenecks which will further impact surrounding communities. One can speculate that this waiver will require the taking of public property, I mean, private property, excuse me, and have a direct impact on a nearby stream which is attributable to the Apeken River, which in turn is attributable to our state and national treasure, the Potomac River. The Berkeley County Growth Plan of 2006 specifically mandates that proposed development shall be consistent with pre-existing development of the surrounding area. The impacted area of proposed development includes what is not limited to Shepherd West, Fieldstone Manor, and Meadow Spring Farm. These developments are one-half acre to 15 acres and are clustered in communities of 15 to 20 homes. A proposed development of 830 homes represents a significant departure from pre-existing surrounding community sizes. Such a proposal forever, and I have to emphasize this, forever changes the character of this area and the value of our homes and is not consistent with the growth plan of 2006. The developer again cites waivers granted by the county as justification for a waiver request. May I remind the board that because a waiver has been granted in the past, doesn't that justify or set precedent for future waivers? If that is the expectation, then why have the regulation or guideline in the first place? I urge the planning board to deny this request.
Thank you.
I have more, Joe.
No, 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 no. We don't need that. We are here to conduct a meeting. We are here to listen to your comments, and applause is totally inappropriate.
Can you speak for me now if I take my comments?
Yes, please.
My question is, can you speak for me, please? And I really want this to be heard.
I can bear with you, just your fast reads. May I now turn to another significant concern about the proposed Patrick Jackson development. In 1994, the Septic system of our five-year-old home began to fail. We would have the system pumped every year, then at six-month intervals, and eventually in 2000, the system had to be replaced. During that time, Mark Septic's tank service did the pumping of raw sewage in conversation. We had conversations with Mark, the owner-operator. We learned that sewage was being dumped and sprayed on what was then crop land and cow pastures of the land in question, which this proposed development now will occupy. I contacted personally the Health Department to assess possible risks for my children who rode bikes and played in undeveloped fields within 100 yards of where this dumping was occurring. We were informed that no regulations prohibited the dumping of untreated human sewage onto crop land. We in turn adapted by not drinking our well water, to this day we don't drink our well water, and avoiding the outdoors at any time that we could smell raw sewage. Rumors suggested the land was owned by Dan Ryan and would not be developed because thankfully, Fieldstone Manor had denied access to Files Crossroad. Many years passed, and now we're faced with this high-density development of what we know firsthand was the site of years of the dumping of untreated human sewage. And I believe there are other community members who are aware of this dumping, who are here tonight. We do not even know if the developer was made aware of the potential contamination of this land prior to them buying it. What we do know is that the EPA, the federal government agency tasked to protect citizens from harmful chemicals in our air, water, and soil, is now proposing restrictions of the use of long-lived chemicals known as PFASs that are known to occur in untreated human sewage. These chemicals are in the water we drink, the packaging of our food that we eat, the clothes we wear, and even in all our body. We cannot escape these forever chemicals. The US government is now proposing the first time ever restriction on six of these chemicals, though there are 9,000 that exist. The EPA says these restrictions over time could prevent thousands of deaths. The substances, PFSA chemicals are hazardous to human immune systems, childhood development, women's fertility, and armatabulism. If human waste, as we believe, was disposed on this land in this proposed development, disturbing this soil may have catastrophic health consequences for the surrounding area and the folks who might purchase homes. If the observations of my neighbors and myself are correct, proceed with this- proceed with this development jeopardizes the potential health of thousands of citizens that county and state public servants are sworn to protect. Let's here tonight pause this proposal until an independent study and thorough investigation of potentially toxic site is completed at the expense of the developer, rather than us taxpayers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak regarding this project?
My name is Phil Young, 603 Bridle Path Drive. I have about five questions. I'll try to get through pretty quickly. I noticed in the documentation, they mentioned that other similar projects to this one have already been proposed and approved. And I wonder if you could, someone could name them for me? I mean, this is pretty specific. A four-lane divided access road into a two-lane state road? I mean, that's, you know, that doesn't seem, on the surface, doesn't seem very logical to me. If someone could answer that with time and date, maybe later, whatever. Secondly, it also mentions that the developer would pay, if they have to do traffication and the access turning lanes, that the developer would pay his quote-unquote "fair share." I really wonder, you know, what would that be? I mean, is it percentage? And then obviously, the rest would be up to the taxpayers to burden the cost of that. And I guess I oppose paying for someone else's profitability on a subdevelopment. Third question, I wanted to ask someone, has emergency services been consulted about this proposed four-lane divided access road into a two-lane state road? And I wondered what their opinions, if they have been consulted, what their opinions are in regard to what, you know, their response time for police and fire and safety? And also the turning lanes, if you have to have a large piece of equipment in there to turn in, to take care of the 800 homes with only one access. I see a potential problem there if you have a major accident on 45, and a fire, let's say, in the development, they can't get in there with only one entrance. I think it was very wise to have, you know, a large development like that mandate multiple entrances for that, and also for evacuations and emergencies as well. Fourth question, on Route 45, is there enough right-of-way for a turning lane, for left and/or right turning lane? It's my understanding, I spoke with the State Highway Department, and they said they think it's 60 feet. So each lane is, that's 30 foot by center line to the edge. I mean, if it's not enough for a wide enough access turning lane, then you're going to have to by eminent domain take property from the people that are living there. And finally, first, it's a statement. In talking with Mr. Ken Cloket, he said that the final TIS has not been approved by the state. So my question is, why would you go with a waiver before the final traffic impact study by the state has not been approved yet? Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, guys. My name is Ken Reed. I'm a former commissioner of Gordon County, former planning permission person up there. I'm now a Berkeley County resident with Route 45. I'm here to oppose the waiver mainly because, and I'm not against growth at all, or following the rules of getting their permits, but I drive from Berkeley to Morgan every day, and I get stuck in Route 9 traffic because mostly of the development that's going on there, and it just causes a bottleneck everywhere from Murphy's Store to I-81. And I'm afraid that if we dump that amount of traffic on the 45, you're going to end up in pretty much the same situation. You know, three, four years down the road, it's going to be pretty tight going there. But that's pretty much it. I'm just hoping to decline the waiver. Thank you so much.
Any other people wish to speak?
I'm Jim Sutphen, 146 Los Alway, Martinsburg, West Virginia. I live in Fieldstone. I'd just like to say I'm very much opposed to this waiver because there is a reason that they put in the fact that you need two entrances to a development this size. This isn't just a little bit over the number for the requirement for two entrances. It's a whole lot. There's going to be a huge amount of people in there. If there's some type of catastrophe that blocks off that entrance, all these people are trapped in there. There's no emergency vehicles getting in. Civil unrest, huge accidents, Justin Frederick recently, a tractor trailer, fuel-carrying tractor trailer wrecked, burned up a house, a lot of things have happened. So I want to remind you, there is a real reason for that, and I really think it would not be in the public's best interest to grant a waiver for a development this size, one way in and one way out. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm representing my mom. She owns the house and property just-
Give us a name.
My name's Jim Mullen. Just east of the proposed intersection of the access road with 45. And the closed road would run parallel with her side property lines, so it would be only about 100 feet from there. And I just wanted to mention that it may devalue her property. I don't know. But I do know 100% that it will degrade the value of the nature of the property and any of the other properties in the, I mean, it's Green Springs, Meadows, any of those properties that, you know, can see the access road, that it cuts in half, just what's now open hay fields and things like that. It just wanted to devalue and degrade the nature of the property and of that community around there. And just wanted to mention that and have that in the record.
Thank you very much. The floor is still open for a public hearing. If you have questions, please come forward and make those known. That's not necessary. Mr. Seonich, you want to answer any of the questions that were proposed to Seonich?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Thank you. Did keep some notes while folks were talking. I'll do my best to follow some type of order here. One gentleman had five specific bullet points. The first was, can we name another community where a waiver similar to this was granted? And one that comes to mind is the Stonecrest community, located off of Route 9 near Hedgesville. That's in excess of 100 blocks, served by a boulevard-style entrance. The second point that the gentleman made with regard to the five points was, he talked about will it be cost incurred by the residents of Berkeley County for these road improvements? Typically, the DOH, all these improvements are developer-funded. So the developer of this project would be responsible for construction of turn lanes, D cell lanes, et cetera. In the case of a signal, the developer enters into agreement, into an agreement with the Division of Highways, where the Division of Highways typically takes the lead on the installation of the signal. The developer's agreement between the developer and Division of Highways usually includes a monetary contribution, that amount spelled out in the agreement. It's a promissory note of source. So the DOH would undertake the design of the signal. The DOH would bid the signal. The DOH would initiate the contract or let the contract associated with the construction of the signal. At that time, the DOH would advise the developer that his promissory note is now due, and you have 15 days or 30 days to remit whatever monetary value is forecast with respect to the cost of the signal installations. With regard to emergency services, I cannot speak to if emergency services offered any feedback on this proposal. Another comment was made with regard to the right-of-way. Again, with a developer-funded project, we would not look for the DOH to do, and they wouldn't anyway, do any taking by eminent domain. So if they prescribe eight lanes of travel lanes, and we had 60-foot right-of-way, most likely I wouldn't be standing here because we physically can't get that geometry in the right-of-way that's available. So the DOH will not be involved in eminent domain or public taking unless the project was, you know, a new bypass that the DOH is undertaking. They typically don't get involved in developer projects and assist with the eminent domain. The other comment, or the last comment the gentleman made was regarding the TIS, the traffic impact statement, our study. Within the study that is, has been distributed, and I believe Laura may have noted it on her presentation, that after a certain number of lots, certain threshold is met, they would like the TIS revisited. Anytime we do a TIS, you're forecasting right-turn movements, you're forecasting left-turn movements. Typically, when we have a number of lots in a community, we can set out new counters and see how close our estimates were for right-turn movements, left-turn movements, things like that. And I think the reason why that was incorporated into the traffic study is that will help the DOH gauge when the signals are required on the project. And again, the signals are Shepherdstown Road and Files Crossroad. And to be clear, a signal is proposed at the entrance, this project access road, with its intersection with Shepherdstown Road. Some other folks made comments. I think I've addressed most of them, but one thing I would like to mention, and I know it was mentioned before in this testimony, the project proposes public water and public sewer. So there is no potential for groundwater contamination after development of this project because we'll be on public utilities. Another person mentioned the receptage sewage waste spread on the field. I have no personal knowledge of that. Quite honestly, that's the first time I heard that this evening. I'm not sure how that would be permitted without the DEP being involved, or at least the local health department being involved. I don't know if a permit was issued for that. I don't know if it was animal waste. Normally, untreated human waste is not placed on the field without some type of treatment. So I'm afraid I don't have any commentary on that, other than it's the first I heard about it. Given the notes that I took, I really don't have anything further to add, given the testimony that was given here this evening.
Okay, the public hearing is still open. If we have any comments that can be made that are not something that has already been addressed, now would be the opportunity to do that. Sir, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I have a response.
Do you want to come back to the microphone?
Just a quick thing. My last question was, why do, why have a waiver before the state approves, the DOH approves, the traffic study? And to me, that seems backwards. Why do that? I mean, from what he was saying, it sounds like, you know, we'll just take our chances, and let us get this started, and then we'll take our chances that the state, I mean, the state, the gentleman I talked to, Ken, I can never remember his last name. Yeah, you know, he, you know, he had a lot of concerns about it. He said others have concerns about it as well. And, you know, like he was saying about the turning lanes and that sort of stuff like that, you know. And I can answer his other question. From, I reached out to emergency services, several people there, reached out to the Berkeley County Sheriff's Department, and from the people I spoke with, no one from the Planning Commission, the staff, or anybody consulted them regarding getting emergency vehicles back there. If you ever have, most likely you wouldn't need a hook and ladder for, you know, single-family homes, but they do have large equipment. They would have to make the turn. And, you know, you can't adjust the turning lanes wide enough with only 60 feet of right-of-way. So, you know, and also response times and all the other things that everybody else said. And I just find it strange that, you know, they didn't, no one really consulted them to begin with. In fact, they're saying they're going to reach out and, you know, try to talk about it now. So that's just a couple things. Thank you.
This is only for the waiver tonight. It's not addressing right-of-ways or anything like that. And the planner can address your specific questions regarding-
I understand what you say, but in a way, I respectfully, you know, disagree with you because it, that does, because it's mentioned in the waiver, the turning lanes and that sort of stuff.
How many engineers did talk to Randy Lilly and emergency services about?
That always stated, those trucks can affect those vehicles. There's no concern about it. My concern here is the exiting of those cars going to 45, the current traffic condition they have, and how they'll affect those vehicles on 45, and how their safety is the issue. Would you recognize that it is a single-
You may want to come to the microphone. I don't think you're being heard. I know you can talk a lot.
Would you recognize it is a single entrance? It is not staff, something that is already presented. It is not our first choice. This was an effort to try to reach some middle ground because the developer cannot seem to secure a second entrance. In our opinion, there are some other things with the entrance road that will probably, that will need to be worked out as the preliminary plan is progressed through. The whole question is, is the Planning Commission willing to entertain this with one entrance?
Thank you.
This is staff's best shot at trying to protect not only the people who live there, but also the people who already live there. This is our, this is our best solution and best recommendation.
Thank you. Okay, I'm ready for the closed public hearing.
I have one question. How many lots were in that Stonecrest development that you're comparing? This one too.
Hold on. Do you want to answer that question?
Stonecrest was the first one that came to mind where we had an excess of 200, or excuse me, 100 lots on a single boulevard-style entrance. That was 260 lots, hopefully. 260 to 270, if my memory serves me correctly. Residential lots plus there was a number of commercial uses on that property in addition to the 260 or 270 residential lots.
Name's David Schultz. I live at 83 Goshen Lane, very close to where the proposed road is. The traffic there is, Route 45 is already very heavy. So I've heard where, if this were put in a two-lane, which I'm very much against a four-lane entrance, that there'll be 1,700-plus cars going down the road. So what impact does that have on us turning into our existing developments right now when we already have problems for providing lanes on and off of there? But was any consideration given for all the people that have to stop on the highway in the middle of a passing zone? For all the traffic coming in each direction behind you? Because it makes then our entrances and those down the road also very dangerous to turn into when you modify that traffic. I feel very much concerned about the gentleman that travels Route 9 every day to Berkeley Springs. You know, where do we put an end, and who's responsible for the overall planning of this community to help our roads and systems and the impact of- community to help our roads and systems and the impact of the overall public as we don't end up with the congestion we do on Route 9 through Hedgesville right now? We have continued, right now, what I'm looking at is I'll be turning on a road that eventually is going to be Route 9 in the middle of, you know, going to Hedgesville. And it's not far from that now. So I'm very much opposed to all this traffic entering from a standpoint of safety for my family and myself and my grandkids and everyone else that comes to this.
Thank you. Okay, did I see another hand up?
She's already spoken three times.
You had a question. You had a question about the sewage, raw sewage that was up there. It was up there, and it wasn't regulated at all in this area. And we have septic all through town. Only in the city we have a city water and a couple of other places. So we have raw sewage that has been pumped from septic, human sewage, which has, we call it shagella, samiella, it's a game of shit. These are killers. These are killer diseases and things that live in falcides. You disturb that and it's going to cause a big problem. And even though you're going to have, you say, you're going to have public water, you're still going to disturb that sewage. You're going to disturb it and it's going to go in all of our mouths.
Okay, your questions have been noted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Gant to close public hearing.
Excuse me, ma'am. So did you have anything new to add to the conversation?
I just wanted to comment on what this gentleman here said about, they only had one option. They don't, they had the 4,700 square foot option as well. They, when they resolved, they decided it was too expensive, not, not the time. So, and I wonder if by the time you do traffic, traffic signals and access lanes, how much difference it would be in place.
You have a motion?
I have a motion made to close public hearing. I don't have a second yet.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, second by Mr. Gofenauer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission, now it's your opportunity to question to the representative or of the staff.
I'd like to make a comment to the staff and the public. Back 20 years ago, when they're talking about dumping human waste on farm fields, that was common practice. It was done on all of the farms I ever grew up on, and that was 20 years ago. There ain't nothing been done recently, and them farm fields have been farmed and turned over and farmed, and that is long gone.
No, 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 no. We're not in a, we're not in a discussion. Thank you.
I'm just telling you what I know from the past, and it's not allowed nowadays, but it had been done in common practice for the last 20 years before they stopped doing it.
Planning Commission members, do you have additional questions?
I do, ma'am. I know for a fact that the developer has suggested a second entrance, which was relatively close to the main entrance that's being proposed today. It wasn't, it was decided that that would actually create more problems than what the single entrance would produce. So we went back to the single entrance and just made it a double boulevard to be able to handle the traffic ingress and egress. You know, I personally, I do also have concerns about that bottleneck that I can see there. Yeah, once it gets to 45, you know, 45, I believe, and I'm not a traffic expert, but I believe that Route 45 can handle that additional traffic. But my concern is not having that second entrance where we've required it on not only this developer's, many other developers, developments that he's done, but also all the developments in the past. If it was 150 or 200 lot, maybe even 300 lot subdivision, personally, I think I could probably get on board with, with doing this, but eight times the amount of homes that is being recommended, unless, unless a traffic engineer or a traffic expert can help me understand that that boulevard can handle that amount of traffic, that's where I'm at with this. And, you know, the emergency services getting in and out there, that's not a problem, you know. They, I know that they can make those turns. But I do concern, it's like with heavy snowfall, even though I know that they, I'm sure they will have a contract of snow removal, I'm just concerned that our regulations, we're going to, we're going to trip over ourselves with the amount of homes that's being requested to serve off of this single entrance. And I know, I've been in the meetings with the developer, I've been in the meetings with Department of Highways and the concerns that have been addressed, and I feel as if the developer tried to accommodate our, our regulations by putting in that second entrance, but it just was not favorable with DOH or our engineering firm, or our engineer, I'm sorry, that they were too close. So I know that, that he's tried to accommodate that, but I am truly concerned that we're looking at eight times the amount of homes off of a single entrance.
What about, what about the communities of Burrell down there with the same divided boulevard entrance coming out on Knight Town Road? What about that subdivision?
Good point.
I mean, there's 600 and some, how many houses in that subdivision?
That is Jefferson County.
No, that's Knight Town Road here in Berkeley County. The communities of Burrell, it has a divided boulevard coming out right onto Knight Town Road, which is half the road around 45.
It has its issues. It's not fully built out yet, but it does have its issues. I mean, the biggest issue we have is the school bus has to stop in the roadway to and from every day, and that is an issue there. Cars don't always mind that school bus. I see it.
That could be, that could be addressed by the Board of Education. That school bus could turn in that divided boulevard, pick the kids up, pull back out.
You're exactly right that they don't.
Wow.
And that's, you know, and I'm not, I'm not here to say one way or the other.
No, I'm not. I'm just saying that, you know...
We tried to accommodate and we tried to make this as fair and as even as we could for everyone, for all parties concerned. This is my best recommendation. If you were to move forward, if these conditions are accepted by the developer, then I think this would be a safe thing. However, it does violate something that you said that we could accommodate, which is that some...
But we have.
We have, but I haven't.
If I may follow up.
You may have before, but not since I've been.
We have, we have a question. Mr. Bush.
I want to follow up though, what Eddie said. Being an engineer myself, and I have concerns of the size of this development, I understand the four-lane egress coming in and out because of making a right-hand turn going out and coming in, making a right-hand turn coming in, make the flow in and out of that go. The concern I have here now, especially in Berkeley County, and I struggle on Route 9 quite a bit, it took me almost an hour today to get here where my house was, is the flow of traffic, if you were in Berkeley County, is being stacked on top of each other. Developments are getting completed, and what you have is the size of this development, you're going to stack on what you have already growing now. So I got concerns because of the size of it. And I follow up with Eddie said, there's 200, 300 houses. I probably wouldn't have a concern at all because I understand flow of traffic. But what you got is, all it takes is one issue. One issue on 45 and you're, everybody's stuck. And in today's world with people, they lose their temper quick. And the size of that development, I would feel a whole lot easier and at ease if there was another, ease me to come into that development. Understand it's a hard balance, but just keep in mind, keep in mind, the flow of traffic five years ago was here, the flow of traffic in this county now is here. And what you got to understand is, you got to be able to take that flow and have one or two issues happen and not stop the flow totally. And what you could have on 45 is one issue happening, and you got all those homes, people aren't going to get into for three or four hours. Four-lane traffic, lane going in and out, I totally understand it, but I struggle with this size of that development and the flow with everything else that's on 45 that is growing, because it is growing. You're expanding on 45 every, every year. And what's, and you added that, that, you can't go back and say, oh, wait a minute, now we got to put something else in there because the flow is too bad. Find it off at first and make it in there.
Thank you.
That's all I'm going to say there.
To your point, the traffic study, when we contemplate so much traffic, we, this isn't in this county, so it's not where that traffic study can predict. That's a commercial side, these amount of trips would be expected. If we get the planning into, a lot of times by the time this subdivision is completed and is scheduled in 2026, any capacity that was built up in these improvements is totally gone. 51 is a perfect example, all the roundabouts. I could show you a traffic study that was just submitted to be a month ago. There is, as a matter of fact, it's overcapacity there now. It's not even done construction, it's overcapacity. There was, they were, they built it residual, but the residual could not forecast this.
County's wrong.
And it's a matter of, same to say, it is not a perfect science, it is somewhat of an art.
Well, and the problem is, the tax dollars from all these houses, the real estate tax dollars go to Charleston, and then it gets divvied up among the state. But the state's not going to come in here and build roads before they're necessary, just like they won't build schools until they're necessary. So, you know, you can't, all right, say you, say you take this 800 subdivision community right here and you cut it in half, and you say, oh, now it's only 400 homes, so we're okay with giving them divided boulevard entrance. And then another developer comes in, buys the other half, and puts an entrance over on the Falls Crossroads because, you know, that's only 300 houses, and we'll let them go over. It's still, the same amount of houses is going to just keep developing somewhere down the road, but...
And just so everyone is clear, Boulevard entrance, the only reason why that was suggested was basically the engineering for the view and staff was to support an emergency vehicle that was an accident on that entrance road, and an emergency vehicle could cross over, get back into those houses should there be something, say there was an accident there and the house was on fire in the rear of the subdivision. It was made two lanes each way with the hopes of an emergency vehicle being able to cross that median, the mountain curve, and get to where they needed to be to serve a more important emergency, if there was an emergency. Let's say a storm came through and a tornado, new trees dangled that road, the firefighters could get back to, you know, another emergency. The boulevard wasn't selected for four lanes for capacity, had nothing to do with it. It was mainly to provide that extra lane in and out in case of emergency.
Park at 50 feet from that accident, I see that an accident, nobody can get into that.
That can happen on any road in Berkeley County.
I take this scenario, it's a sign of trust me.
I know.
And I'm trying to, it's a balance, like you said. I'm trying to balance this with money and people and traffic safety and everything else.
Okay.
Honored President?
Yeah.
If I may highlight my opposition to the waiver in total. First, that I believe it's premature to consider the waiver without the feedback from Department of Highways as to the revised study for the single entrance plan, as well as a comparison of this, if there were a second entrance that were to be possible, I believe that would be helpful information to analyze as far as weighing the equities of the design of the subdivision. And the second is, it is not my interpretation that satisfies the requirements for a waiver. I agree with all the safety concerns for the off-site traffic on Route 45, but I believe that the two entrance requirement should also focus on matters within the subdivision. And I haven't heard any information about quality of life for residents that live in the subdivision, safety for pedestrians that live within the subdivision, and there's not been much information offered as far as emergency services responding within the subdivision. I understand getting into the subdivision, but it would be helpful to have more information as far as how emergency services would actually operate within the subdivision. So for those reasons, I'm opposed to the waiver.
Okay. Is there anything else that the planning commission members would like to bring up as part of discussion?
Yeah, I got, for the county engineer, did, did or did not the developer have two access points for this subdivision?
Yes, there was one proposed the first time, going through the field soon, and the second was located 400 feet east of this entrance on 45. It was a limited access entrance, right in, right out. However, it was felt that the effect of that entrance was the minimum, that it really didn't provide. The whole thing of the second entrance is to have a back door, a access point to dump traffic out going to an alternative roadway or trick direction. In other words, you want to split your traffic. You don't want, and putting it 400 feet there, you might as well just have this signal. As a matter of fact, my comment was, you're wasting your money. Do it on the boulevard entrance, install this signal, do all the, all the off-site improvements, do the lane improvements. You're much safer than what they were proposing. That would have been a disaster.
But, but I'm saying, they had two alternate entrances, and that would have met the criteria of the subdivision ordinance. They work with...
No, it would not. It did not meet the criteria because it was only located 400 feet east of the existing entrance.
Is there anything in our subdivision ordinance says?
It wasn't a full access intersection.
Oh.
Okay, planning commission members, do you have additional questions?
Okay. All I got to say.
If there is no further questions, I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make the motion. We accept staff recommendations with all five, eight conditions that the developer's willing to agree to.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Motion dies for a second. I'm ready for another motion.
I'll make a motion that we do not accept staff recommendations for the waiver based on the conditions that were brought up in the ordinance requiring two entrances. You know, we've had lots of conversations, see, you've been in here with those about, about two entrances and the importance of that for the residents in the subdivision. Most of us probably won't be around when there's 800 houses built in there, but those folks will say, thank you for not doing that. So I make a motion, we deny the waiver.
Second.
A second by Mr. Fush. Okay. Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Bush to accept, to deny the waiver for Patrick Jackson, and that would be for meeting any conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Do I hear any no's?
No.
Okay, let the record show, there's one no by Mr. Gant. All those in favor? Did I get a, did I get an, everybody in favor? All right. Kind of got screwed over here with this no.
Ready.
Okay, thank you for coming, thank you for your patience, thank you for your cooperation. We don't need... We don't need that. We don't need that. We don't need that.
I'm just telling you. I'm just telling you, I can name off four more subdivisions. We grant this way before and it's, I'm telling you. We're gonna get our asses handed to us when we keep doing this shit. It wouldn't have mattered if you'd have put two entrances on that. You're still got the same amount of traffic dumping into.
Rodney, come on, clear, man.
That ain't what everybody else here was saying. They was saying if, if, if something happened with back traffic, well, something happened in any Riden County, they'll back traffic up. What the hell are you guys handling? I'm just. But I'm just telling you. We gotta watch doing this shit or we're gonna be in a fucking nightmare. That man, I guess, could be busy in the subdivision and county funds are gonna be going out the freaking door.
Okay, we'll continue with our meeting. Preliminary plan approval for Bear Heritage Federal Credit Union.
Yes, hi. This is a request for preliminary plan approval. The project is Bear Heritage Federal Credit Union. The file is twenty-two oh one dash zero zero nine. The developer is La Mafia Group LLC. The engineer is Triad Engineering. It's located in the Arden District, map fifteen, parcel two point seven. This site is located on Partnership Drive, west of Technology Drive and north of Business Park Drive. This project proposes a two thousand nine hundred and two square foot bank on approximately one and a quarter acres to be served by public water and sewer. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On March tenth, two thousand twenty-three, county engineer Doug Smith stated the above-mentioned project was compliant with the subdivision ordinance two thousand nine. The preliminary plan is compliant with the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Jackson Gardner, Triad Engineering.
Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Gardner or the staff?
Here now, ma'am, I make the motion. We accept staff recommendation for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gokenhauer, second by Mr. Lewis to accept staff recommendation and that is to grant approval to the preliminary plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next item is final plat determination. Martin B. and Wanda Fry.
Yes, this is a request for final plat determination. The project is Martin B. and Wanda and Fry on Dunkin' Donuts Inwood. File number is twenty-two twelve dash three eighty-nine. The developer is Martin and Wanda Fry. The engineer is Fox and Associates. It's located in the Mill Creek District, map six, parcel four. The property is located on the north side of Jarrettstown Road, approximately nine hundred feet east of Interstate eighty-one. This final plat proposes the creation of a one point two acre parcel for Dunkin' Donuts and a twenty-three point two acre residue to be served by public water and sewer. On March ninth, two thousand twenty-three, county engineer Doug Smith found the project to be in compliance with the subdivision ordinance two thousand nine. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing or consideration of final plat approval at the April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. Steve Cianovich with Fox and Associates, representing this project.
You're a brave man, Mr. Cianovich. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Cianovich?
There and I make the staff recommendation. We accept staff recommendation. Final plat meets requirements of subdivision ordinance. Therefore, recommend final plat determination, advertising a public hearing, consideration of final plat approval on April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Lewis to accept staff recommendation. And that is to conduct a public hearing for final plat approval on April seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, the last item that we have is staff council action motion. Okay, okay, we were given the activity report the last planning commission meeting. If you've had an opportunity to review it, I'd like to congratulate Laura on the fine job of compiling all these numbers and giving us the information. We did do a decrease though in our money collected, so.
Well, we had a lot of preliminary plans the year before, high dollar amounts because of the lot fees. So past year, so twenty twenty-two, you saw a lot of final plats which aren't nearly as much fees collected. And the year before, twenty twenty-one was the highest year ever for obvious reasons. So it's gonna be hard to ever top that again, but.
Okay, well, some time ago, since you brought up fees, I asked you to give us maybe a suggestion for fee increases because we haven't had a fee increase since, what, two thousand?
Twenty seventeen.
Seventeen. Huh?
I have it. It's part of the subdivision ordinance that county council was forwarded. So it's part of that. I can give it to you guys separately. It's just a sheet. All I, with those increases, to be transparent, all I did was add inflation from twenty seventeen. And then there's some things that Doug reviews that he, they weren't collecting fees for for like, bill submissions, collect fees, but like bond reductions, you weren't getting a bond reduction fee until the third and that's pretty work intensive for Doug. So there would be a fee for each bond reduction. And then plan changes, engineering weren't collecting fees for plan changes. If it's just going to planning and that's usually heavy on Doug's side too, so he'd be collecting a fee. So that's really the only changes.
So what you're telling me is those fees are now incorporated in the two thousand twenty-three?
It's appendix in the twenty twenty-three now.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay.
Mr. Legal, where do we stand on that?
Ask county council. I don't know. We're gonna first go through the council's wanting to work on, work getting the stormwater ordinance adopted. And then move into subdivision ordinance, stormwater ordinance. We've got hearings, public hearing set.
I wasn't here when they set them, but I know they are set. I don't know whether they.
Think they're.
Probably thirty days now from whatever it says.
Well, yeah, they're, I think they're in.
Well, we don't want this to be a twenty-four.
I agree.
I mean.
It was twenty twenty-two.
Mad President, I can tell you this council has been extremely busy.
Yeah.
Trust me.
It's, they've been.
We'll get there. We'll get there.
It will get, it will happen this year. This stormwater ordinance, the county is probably gonna become co-permitting easily with Stormwater District. And we're working on an application to the D E T. So we need to get this ordinance in place. And it's much better corresponds with what we actually do here. And speaking of fees, that, that fee structure might change. There might be a fee that actually goes toward some of, be something the council have to decide, but discuss a fee there for the reviews that the engineers do specific to the stormwater, which we don't collect a fee on. Stormwater fees mainly are generated from individual lot owners, so.
So we got a rain tax now. We gonna get a sunshine tax too?
Want to.
Well, I mean, we're gonna tax while it's raining. Might as well tax when the sun's out, right?
Yeah, we should.
And then we can put a cloud tax. Wind tax?
Think of more ways.
Put zoning in place. We can tax everything under the sun.
Think of more ways to raise revenue. Go ahead.
Okay, so the public hearing has been set for, you think, May for the stormwater management ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. And, and how is that going to fit into what our staff has spent a year and a half working on?
I, I think.
Let's be gracious.
I think it fits in well. But I, I, the council will take that up and do. This year. I promise. You, you're pretty close with some folks on the council.
I don't discuss that stuff with the council.
Come on now.
Believe me, they're not, the council has not ignored what you sent to the planning commission. It was with the planning commission for like five years.
I know. I know. It was five years of, of, but the longer it waits, the more work it needs when it's time for it to be done.
It was asked to work every time.
Yeah.
We had to have that thing up October, off with our heads.
Reviews behind.
No, honestly, the stormwater, the stormwater ordinance, I was pushing for that to be ready to go before we pushed out our ordinance. So it's a good thing because if we need to change it, we have the opportunity to change it, but we really shouldn't. It's the way that we interjected them. They just kind of pointing to the adopted stormwater ordinance now instead of being specific. So if one changes, most of them don't have to.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you're, to pay the little stormwater for that. I gave you everything to there and left it. If anybody was stormwater.
So read stormwater ordinance. It's a fun read.
I try to put cool things in there for them.
All righty, the activity report. Anybody want to make a motion to send it on to the council? Motion, Ms. Norton? Second by Mr. Goff?
With your edit.
Yes, there is a slight error in like page three where we talk about six and eight, so, and there's no common denominator.
There were six planning commission members and now there's eight, so I, I forgot to change one of the other.
So it just goes to show you, I do read.
I'll press.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's in your ballpark now, okay? And you're working on the, getting the subdivision and stormwater, right? Okay, all righty. If there's nothing else to discuss, I have a motion, Mr. Goff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gant to adjourn at seven twenty-six. Thank you.